Well, good morning. Welcome, everybody, to a special B O C C meeting. If you look at the agenda today, we've got one item, and then we will have an executive session. Is that correct, Justin? We'll have an executive session, so I'll officially call the meeting to order for August the 13th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meister.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Lopez.
Chairman Bailey.
Present. Next item.
New business, item A, 2025 budget discussion.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Chairman of the Commission, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. Today is August 13th, which makes tomorrow August 14th. That is a general meeting tomorrow. There is on tomorrow's agenda an item to discuss budget. And then the 21st, which is next week, is the day of adoption. So we are coming down to the wire regarding any adjustment to budget going forward before you you vote. The purpose of today's meeting is to talk about the budget. I know a number of you have had questions and a number of you have suggestions on additions and cuts as we go forward, and I think that's the purpose of the meeting. I don't, I would be glad to to lead this. I've got the list of of items, but I know that the commissioners want to talk on their specific items, and we, I guess what we'd like to see is more of a discussion amongst you all on how to move forward with any changes or modifications, amendments to the existing recommended budget. So I'll start with the easy one. Commissioner Dennis had got ahold of me two or three weeks ago and wanted an analysis on NACO versus the federal lobbyist. And I think his question, Commissioner Dennis can correct me if I'm wrong, but do we need both of them? Do we need one or the other of them, or do we need neither of them? And so what I brought today is just on this topic is the financials of the situation. Our lobbyist, our federal lobbyist, and we discussed this three or four weeks ago in a in a meeting, roughly costs $78,000 per year for Thorn Run. The NACO membership is $9,967 per year. We discussed a few weeks ago what what the federal lobbyist does or does not do, so I don't want to rehash that. But I do want to talk about NACO a bit, and I know some commissioners are more involved in NACO than others, and some staff are more involved in NACO than others. And so I'd like to just have the the discussion. Just very high level, what NACO purports to do for a county government is to give you exclusive access to DC, to Washington DC, to the federal government through this membership. And they advocate for counties on a federal level. That's number one. They engage members, so you have a a membership network across the country of like-minded commissioners or county officials who have to try to run government. You can share ideas and best practices. They they, once in a while, will roll programs which could save taxpayers money. They, for example, had a live, healthy prescription discount program that they they rolled forward. So if a county chooses or doesn't choose to take part of that, there could be cost savings for the county and for its citizens. And they, most counties in the country belong to NACO, so you're part of it. It's back to this networking component again that allows you to have access to to other officials. Now, just in the staff, just just my staff that has taken advantage of NACO-related events. We have our risk coordinator has been involved. Our revenue manager has taken opportunities there. Kevin Stamper from the Counselor's Office, Mike Alpers, Scott Plank, who's a network architect. Our deputy county manager has gone to a regional meeting. Our deputy director of Aging has gone, and on and on. There's a number of, we probably have 15 to 20 registered events that our staff has attended in because we're NACO members. So if something were to happen to NACO, we'd have to find a substitute for that or another networking opportunity. So that's my my advocacy for NACO. And I know that I know that some commissioners have attended NACO events, too. So with that, Commissioner Dennis, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, this came up when we were discussing the lobbyist. One of the things that you said during that discussion was that the sheriff didn't need the lobbyist because he has a national organization. Well, I didn't see, I saw a parallel between what the sheriff said and what we have. We've got a a national organization that costs less than $10,000 a year, and yet we have a federal lobbyist that's costing us $78,000 a year, which is the most valuable for us to have. I know what I've got my opinion on which is the most valuable. Truly, I I would peak NACO, honestly. I I still do not see a necessity for a national lobbyist. So when it comes time to vote for the budget, that will be the direction that I'm voting.
Mr. Meister.
Well, I respect that. I was curious, based on our, when that came up, I was in Farnborough at the at the air, at the air show and had a chance to visit with the top two staff of Senator Moran at one time. And just so out of the blue, I asked them, I said, because they had got something else going, and and I said, I asked them, I said, do you have much interaction with our federal lobbyists? And they said, yeah. And I said, you know, from my, I tried to keep this as neutral as possible. I said, so is he a value to you and your staff on little league on issues in Washington, or or is he could be, is he in the way or whatever? And they both immediately said, oh, no, he's very valuable. We talk to him a lot and we use him a lot. My perspective is Senator Moran, as we saw yesterday, is is the most active federal legislator we have in support of this area. And so it was a confirmation to me that if his key staff think that he's that our federal lobbyist is valuable, then then I'm still in favor of keeping the federal lobbyist.
Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. I would advocate for both as well. Just the return on investment in my, from my preview has been quite significant when it comes to Jim Davenport. Just the last time that Commissioner Meister and I were in DC advocating for a couple of things, we've heard that 2 million has been allocated or put into the budget for ARC 95 and 3 million for the new EOC. So I think that in and of itself is paid for multiple years of of his service. And and NACO, the the networking that happens there that I've been able to experience within that organization really helped allow me to have the connections to go to DC once again and close on the 50 million Build Back Better grant for WSU and for Smart Manufacturing. So I think both of them are true assets that we can lean into when we need, and I think they both more than paid for themselves at this point.
Mr. Dennis.
Well, another one of my big issues with the lobbyist is that what we did was just piggyback on the City of Wichita's contact with the lobbyist. We've never bid it. We've never found out if there is a more effective lobbyist out there in Washington DC. We've never found out if there's a lobbyist that charges less than $78,000 a year. We we just single sourced or sole sourced. I know that there's always an argument on what you call it, but the fact is that we've never looked. And as long as we've never looked, I'm not going to support just piggybacking on the the city's contract. Now the city is paying 78,000. I imagine we're paying 78,000. So the same taxpayers are paying double for a lobbyist in Washington DC, even though they might be advocating for different things. I'm I'm just not comfortable with us deciding that the best course of action is just to say this is the only person in Washington DC when there are probably thousands of lobbyists in DC. Thank you.
Commissioner Ha.
I've been here 10 years. I've never gone to NACO. I have gone to KCCA many, many times. I've gone to KAC many, many times. I think there's a lot of value in those interstate, it's interstate conventions where you can talk to commissioners, commissioners in our in our community, talk to legislators. You can talk to people who are close to Kansas. I'm not, I'm not so sure that we should be involved in either one of these personally. By the way, NACO says it's $10,000 a year to remember be a member, but how much do we spend in commissioners and other staff traveling back and forth? If we're trying to find ways to trim our budget, I think we ought to be looking at the actual true cost, which is a lot of folks traveling on airplanes and getting hotels for many trips. Again, I've I've been to Washington, as a commissioner, I've been to DC one time so far. I don't think that we need to be going to Washington DC a lot. Here's the, here's the reality is I have phone numbers for Jerry Moran, Roger Marshall, and Ron Estes. And they care deeply about Sedgwick County, who are one-sixth of the state's population. And we, as commissioners, are spokespeople for this county. We can talk to them about our priorities, and I trust them to work for us, and they do a good job. And I don't know that neither, either one of these two opportunities has really panned out as being a a huge win for the taxpayers. It's a good experience to go there, but we can give those experiences in our own state. So if it was up to me, I would probably not do either one of these, but I don't think we actually have the true cost of NACO. If you look at the, and some commissioners, some some commissioners have been in NACO every single year. Okay, and you add that up. There's been a, there's been a lot of money spent on NACO. And again, if you, even if you wanted to go one year and you didn't go, you know, every single year, maybe there's value in going once in a while, but I think overall, we spend a lot of money on NACO, a lot more than $10,000.
Again, I would just reiterate that we have brought in over $55 million from both of these organizations and that they have more than paid for themselves. So I would just like to leave it on that note. Thank you.
Hey, Tom. City of Wichita also uses Jim Davenport, his Thorn Run partners. In your view, is there a separate set of initiatives that City of Wichita is pursuing on a federal level and Sedgwick County is pursuing? Is there, I can understand why we would want different state lobbyists for obvious reasons. But on the federal level, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to work more closely with Wichita on this, or I?
Yeah, I said, you could argue both sides of that. When we, when we hired Davenport five years ago, we had that discussion of, and you're exactly correct, at the state level, there's a lot of different differing agendas between municipalities and county governments. I think a separate lobbyist there makes sense. At the federal level, it's such a broad scope. We're really focused on transportation. We focus on water. We focus on broad topics that I think there's actually benefit, in my opinion, of having a lobbyist that's similar. And there was a time back when COVID was active that State of Kansas was looking for a federal lobbyist, and they, they talked about Davenport. I think there's some benefits in synergy there to have a similar federal lobbyist, not the state lobbyist level. But I could argue the same way, too. I think that that sometimes there is conflict, even on, even on issues of transportation, although not so much here locally, because we have such a robust WAMPO and Chamber Transportation Group that we get along and there's good partnership there. But I could see conflict that could happen and and you'd have to.
I'm not, I don't expect you to know this. I'd be surprised if you did. Do we know, or do they pay the same fee that we pay for Thorn Run Partners, Wichita? Do we have any idea?
They pay more.
They pay more. So 70% of my constituents live in Wichita, and so City of Wichita and Sedgwick County government are paying over 100 and likely $150,000 for the same federal lobbyist.
So so to Commissioner Dennis's point earlier, we, it was our original plan to piggyback on the city's contract. And then when we reached out to to work through those logistics, we actually were able to keep our same rate, which is lower than the response that I think Jim Davenport's firm gave through the city's competitive solicitation process. So we renewed our contract under that thought. I think we're extended through 2025. But then it'll be, I mean, regardless, if the commission wants to do something different with an ARC, now we can always talk through that contract. But at least at the end of 2025, we have to come back and have this conversation if the commission chooses to fund it.
Okay. Any other questions on this topic? And next up.
Yeah, just for, just for people viewing, and the commission talked about this a couple of weeks ago. We will, we're keeping a list, and all of these, I guess if a commissioner wants to raise the motion, we'll have all of these prepared in motion language next week. And I'll get with you, Commissioner Dennis, to firm this one up, but and then a commissioner can bring forth a motion for vote next week of official action. So today is a discussion phase of that, and then we will craft motions on any of these topics today that a commissioner, a single commissioner, wants brought forward next week.
You're planning on us voting on these next week and not on Budget Adoption Day?
No, on Budget Adoption Day.
Those two.
We, we, we are, we are eight days out.
Yes, we, sorry, apologize.
I can go over the calendar again. It's getting very short. So, all right. The next topic that I've been contacted by multiple commissioners on is senior center funding. And I'm going to look to Commissioner Howell or Lopez to start the conversation here, and then we can listen to what the will of the board is. And again, we'll craft motions based on what is set here today.
Well, I'm still advocating for both Clearwater and Hayesville to be moved up to the next level. When we froze senior center funding, they had met the requirements to be at that next level, and there's a lot of discontent right now just with the fact that everyone else was at the level that they should have been, and they were not. And I understand that it's always been, if the money was there, I get the history, but the reality is they had done everything they should have done for the two years that they needed to do it, and then were frozen at the level underneath. So so I'm still advocating for that. I am not saying that I have a big thing one way or the other on what all senior centers we include on this. I mean, I think you guys know your senior centers in your areas much better than I do and what the need is there. But I would love to see that both Hayesville and Clearwater go up to the next level in this year. And then I really want to look at senior centers more in depth next year and see, do we really need the system that's in place today? Can we make it easier with maybe two or three tiers? What does that even look like? How can we just update that? Because it really hasn't been updated in many, many years. So that would be my hope that we could get to, but I think this year some of the senior centers need to go up.
On those two, as she's recommending, Clearwater would go from 18,000 to 35,000, and Hayesville was the other, would go from 35,000 to 57,000.
Mr. Ha.
Well, those two, those two senior centers are in District Two. There are actually seven that I think are equally eligible for the same reason. That's Clearwater, Hayesville, Oaklawn, Bentley, Cheney, Mount Hope, and Orchard Park. I believe Orchard Park is in District Four. Mount Hope, Cheney, Bentley are in District Three. Oaklawn's in District Five. And of course, Clearwater and Hayesville are in District Two. And if you increase all of those, they've not, they've not seen an increase, I believe, since, I'll say, 2017, at least, if not 2016. That was the last time they were eligible for an increase. And so a lot of these have had a lot of these, a lot of these senior centers have continued to meet performance measures, but they're struggling. And in that same timeframe, you know, cost of, cost of doing those services has obviously gone up. If we address all seven of these, it's $122,000 reoccurring. And I had a motion that and by the way, this motion's not exactly, well, maybe it is. What I said was there are a couple of these senior centers that are not meeting performance measures. And what it says, I can read it if you want me to read it, but basically what it means is if they don't meet performance measures by the end of 2027, then they would be reverted back to the current funding, and they would not be eligible. They would not be eligible for increase in funding for two years. Anyway, so this is a way, you know, the, the argument has been there's a dog chasing his tail, and you can't get the funding to provide the services, therefore the services aren't there. People don't show up, and the numbers don't reflect the need. So this is an investment, assuming there's a need, we'd like to see those services provided and see the response of the community. And if the community responds, the performance measures will reflect that, and they should be eligible for that continued higher level of funding going forward. But if people don't use these, these services, then then that will be clearly the performance measures. They should, they should be reverted back. So I would be glad to read this motion in its entirety if you'd like, but if it, if this one does not pass, then I would have a secondary motion for Oaklawn specifically. And that one is a pay-go motion where I'm sacrificing something else that is for Oaklawn to provide services that Oaklawn, if you ask Oaklawn for their priority list, the 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 top, the the top one would be more, the senior center is more important than the transit. I'll just say that. So I think they're both important. But if you have to pick one of those two, the senior center has a greater need. So we would sacrifice the transit program to get the money for the senior center that they are, they are desperate. And if they, if they don't find some solution, I don't know that they'll be able to survive. That's my opinion. So I'm glad to read the motion in its entirety if you want to hear it or willing to answer any questions.
Couple of questions. Commissioner Howell, can you, what is the fiscal note on the second? I got the first one, 122,000 for the seven. The second motion that you also were discussing, the Oaklawn exchanging transit for the senior center, what is that? What are those metrics?
That would, that would relocate, re- allocate $22,000 to the Oaklawn Senior Center. And it would leave the remaining 16,777, excuse me, $16,795 to go back to the general fund. We pay 30, yes, 38,795.
Yeah, Commissioner Meister.
I had a comment is, because some of us have been your second motion is interesting in that we've had some discussions, been, some of us have been more involved than others in this transit expansion world. And Derby Dash seems to be a, a, a very, in the world of bus transportation, they seem to be fairly successful. And since I think the school district of Oaklawn is in the Derby School District, I I would entertain your second motion to do that, and and then we encourage Derby, Derby Dash to provide not only transportation in the school district, but Derby's got many, many retail and doctors and everything else that that they use it for. Just my quick observation from your comments.
My response to that is, of course, the transit system doesn't go to Derby. It goes into Wichita. These folks are trying to get to work. And it's not necessarily shopping. It's it's about work and things in the Wichita community. Derby Dash doesn't go that direction. So the, we did have a briefing the other day from the Department of Aging that talked about the one program that people in the unincorporated can go anywhere in, if I understand correctly, for $3. They can go any, anywhere they need to go, pick up at their help, at their home, and drop off at their destination within the county. Yet if I'm misunderstanding that, please, please clarify that. But for $3, that is a a subsidized service, and I would expect these folks who are currently going to work with the bus would have another option. So I need to understand that fully, but but again, with Commissioner Meister's comment, I mean, you are correct. They could potentially, you know, work with Derby to get some access to to Derby. The Derby Dash, as far as I know, never does not go to Oaklawn at all. It's just it is only for, with inside the city, city, city limits of Derby, if I understand correctly. So I'm not sure it solves the problem, but thank you for the idea.
Mr. Dennis.
Thank you. I'm not against senior center funding. What I'm against is it not being fair and equitable between each of the districts. My district is the largest, so transportation is a problem, getting seniors from one place to another. The senior centers that we have are some of the poorest out there. I do not believe just giving certain senior centers, even those in my district, additional funding would be prudent at times, because if they don't have an ability to use it right away, then it's just going to go back into the general fund. What I want is to be fair and equitable. I want each of the districts to get something close to the, to the same amount of money. And the proposal doesn't, in addition, the the first one for 122,000, I wouldn't support that because you're dumping money into a senior center that may not be prepared for it. What my proposal would be, would be to make it fair and equitable between all of the districts, mine specifically. Transportation is an issue. If the senior services could use that money to move the seniors over to the senior centers, that would be a better idea than just dumping more money into a senior center that they may not be able to use. So I want to make sure, because transit is really a big issue in my district. It's so large. To move the seniors from their home over to a senior center when they're, they can't drive, that they have mobility issues, that's more important to me. Then, as the the senior services finds that that there are certain things that one of those seniors centers can do, they can allocate that funding to that senior center and to make improvements in it. So I I do not want to just start dumping money into senior centers that they're not available, that they're ready for. What I want to do is put money into senior services so that they can support my district fair and equitably. I have the same number of seniors as everybody else. I want to make sure that I'm getting the same funding as everyone else. Thank you.
I'll make a point of order, please. Are we here to debate these today or simply present them for us to understand the proposal? And that we can debate these and vote on these on on Wednesday next week? If we're going to debate these today and then again next week, I don't see the point of doing this now. At the end of the day, I've I've heard that same argument probably at least more than half a thousand times, I'm sure. We can, we can debate, some of these ideas are not going to be very popular, and and my intent is to present them today for purposes of just understanding what the proposal is. So give you some time to chew on it, think about it before next Wednesday, not necessarily decide right now or to debate it today. If we're going to debate these today, we don't have time. I'm sorry. But but I've got, I think, 11 or 12 of these, and we'll be here till afternoon if we, if we're going to debate these today.
But that's a good point, Commissioner. I think the purpose, I think the purpose of today is to bring, put them on a table so that commissioners understand what's going to be talked about and voted on next week or potentially brought forth in motions. I don't know that we have to debate them necessarily. It's as much as you, the chairman wants to allow.
Why don't, I I agree that maybe debating them is probably not fruitful for today, but I I would say that if the motion poses a question that we want staff to look into, I think now would be the time. I'll give you an example. I have a question on the budget impact here and where this money is going to come from on these, on one, on both of these proposals. Motion two, I think, is obvious. There's an offset there, but motion one, I would, I don't know if we need an answer today, because I think, but but I, I would want to know where the money would come from on something like that.
And the motion does include that information.
Very good. There you go. Okay. But I think clarifying questions, I think, would be helpful today.
If you'll let me answer that question right now on that particular last motion that I talked about, it's from the for this year, it would be from B O C C contingency fund to the Aging Department Fund. It'd be a transfer of $122,000. And then if the second motion was to pass, then the 16,795 would be eliminated from the 25 general fund budget. It simply would be not budgeted, but money incident in the general fund.
Tim, have we done, there was talk of an analysis being done on other, all of the senior centers that we're funding now. Have we done an audit of something, some of that?
We're waiting until this process works out this year, but we are prepared. If if that's the will of the commission, we could go ahead and evaluate all those, every senior center. The mission, or the motion that Commissioner Howell has indicated would require us to do that for those five or or seven, to make sure that they're performing at a higher level. So we can do whatever the commission likes in terms of assessment and evaluation of performance.
Are we going to see all these motions ahead of time so that we can analyze them ahead, or are we going to have to make a decision on the spot?
I can hand out a copy if you want to see it now.
No, I just want to see it ahead of the meeting so that I can.
I think, whatever you like, I have it right in front of me.
I think, I think the answer that should be yes. I think commissioners.
That's all.
And so just to summarize this topic, I I'm seeing. Um, and so just to summarize this topic, I, I'm seeing three potential motions. Uh, it's Commissioner Lopez's motion, Commissioner Howe had two. So we could, you could see three.
Well, I'm actually thinking maybe a fourth as well for Commissioner Dennis's. It's up to spreading equally across the districts. Correct? Is that right, sir? Okay.
And that one will require a little bit of staff work between now and then. So.
One question, and the question that I've had for a while, but can't seem to get an answer is when this was frozen, I know Hayesville Clearwater were frozen at the lower level because I've talked to them repeatedly about it. But are there any other senior centers that should have been moved up at that time that were not?
Mulberry, there were four senior centers that were proposed to be increased based on performance. Two, you identified Mulberry and then Bel Air. Over the course of time, Bel Air has indicated that they're not interested in that increased amount because of the increased responsibility that goes with that funding. And Mulberry got picked up a couple of years ago and on budget adoption day, one of the commissioners made a motion for two senior centers, Valley Center and Mulberry. And so Mulberry has been made whole. So of the four back in twenty seventeen, the two there left Hayesville and Clearwater.
Thank you.
Do we know, Tim, are there others that are due that maybe they weren't, they were froze at? The situation in Hayesville and Clearwater is they were froze at the wrong level. Do we know in the interim period since twenty nineteen, have there been some senior centers that now deserve the next level of funding that?
It would, it's difficult to say because of the impact of the pandemic. So it, it appears that most of the senior centers are not performing at the, yet at the level that they were prior to the pandemic. And people's actions changed. They don't go out as much, that sort of thing. And so it's difficult to say if anybody else has consistently achieved the, at the next higher level than the funding that they're receiving now, based on that old formula.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the other items that, uh, that we have looked at the last couple of weeks are, are Commissioner Howells. Some of them are budget cuts. Some of them are operational uh, questions. Commissioner Howe, I don't know how you want to go through these. If you want to just leave it if you don't mind.
Can I just walk my way through this? I want to be able to, you know, set them up. The first one of these, uh, we've talked about before. Uh, I believe that Northwest Expressway uh, on today's dollars is probably getting close to a billion dollars, if not more than a billion dollars. I don't know what the total number is. Lynn, if you have an idea?
Um, yeah, it's, uh, the entire project, uh, is in a, in the billion dollar range. Um, we have suggested breaking that project in it into phases. Um, the first phase being, uh, from Tyler twenty-first street, uh, we do not have an updated estimate of what that phase of the project would be less than a billion dollars.
And can you, can you answer how much money has been given by the county or by the state, uh, at, at this time?
Uh, that no, I don't have the exact number in front of me, uh, but they, in total, they've collected about thirty million dollars.
And is there, are someone actually already in the process of purchasing right away? Or are they simply waiting to do that?
Yes. So they've purchased a little over, uh, fourteen million dollars and right away.
Okay. Well, I guess my, my thought here is for the county to put another million dollars into this and the state to put another million dollars into this. That's not even keep, it's not even keeping up with the, the, can, the price point of this project. That's not even going to pay for the inflationary increase in, in the cost of that project. We're essentially, we're, we're going to see the total project cost, um, go up by more than two million dollars this year and a, a project that size. We're talking about, we're talking about point, a, a point two percent increase if it was a billion dollars. A point two percent increase in funding that on a project is probably going to go up at least three, four, five percent, I, I would say in, in the next year. So with that in mind, I don't see a point in doing this at this time. I think right now we, we need to have a better plan. Until there's a better plan, the state or the federal government needs to develop a better plan. And if we have a plan that makes sense and we know what we're saving for, then I think I would be more interested in doing that. But right now we're saving and we have no plan. It's a concept. It is, um, we don't know it, what the state or federal government has any, any commit, commitment towards this at all in terms of actually doing this project. And it may not happen in, in our lifetime or our great grandkids' lifetime. End of the day, this is a lot of money. And we're trying to find ways to, to, to solve our budget issues. I think this is one of those things we have to take a look at. So with that in mind, I have a motion to eliminate the one million dollars that we would put towards our three twenty-eight program this year. It just would eliminate that funding this year and we would re, reallocate those resources for other projects in the future C I P. That's the motion. And if that doesn't pass, I have a secondary motion to do that a little bit differently.
Uh, question, this, uh, one million dollar allocation from the county is matched by KDOT to buy protective overlay. The, does this come from the one cent sales tax?
Yes, that is correct.
So if, if this, this doesn't have, what's the budget impact of this? Does this one million stays into that one cent sales tax fund to be used for?
It would be used for, uh, we would actually put it into, uh, projects already planned.
It, it wouldn't, depending on how it's structured, it likely wouldn't change your overall budget because this is, it's not your general fund. It's not any of that. It would affect your C I P potentially if you remove the one million or if the direction is to reallocate for this year, then we could go through a C I P amendment process and increase each project as we go. Or it just becomes, to your point, a million dollars get, that gets added to the bottom line that can be invested in future C I Ps. Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah.
I will note, um, the current contract with KDOT expires, uh, next year. And we will renegotiate a new contract next year. So that is something to consider with that as well. We, we have the option of the current contract of participating at, at zero million dollars. Um, actually, zero, we can participate at any rate we want, um, but they will match up to one million, um, whatever we put into it. We also have a separate agreement with, uh, the cities of, uh, Goddard and Mays to each put in five thousand dollars. So if we were to reduce or eliminate our, um, uh, participation, obviously that was something we need to communicate with our partners.
Okay. Other questions, some. Okay, next up.
Let me just say that if that doesn't pass, I would then, uh, similar to what Commissioner Dennis was advocating for a minute ago on senior centers, I would advocate that we, we reallocate two hundred thousand dollars. And if Commissioner Lopez want, would want to do this as well, perhaps it should be four hundred thousand dollars, but from that Northwest Expressway project, I know we would be giving up the state's matched money. However, I'd rather see that money go towards project, uh, that I think is viable and it's art ninety-five. So this would be a reallocation of that commitment of sales tax revenue to go from the Northwest Expressway and reallocate that towards art ninety-five.
Other questions? And none. Next up.
Okay, this one, I, I have to tell you, I, I don't know if I should read these numbers out loud because it's going to upset some people, but, um, we gave a, I would call it a haircut to Exploration Place um, in this proposed budget. And, and since then, we've had meetings with Exploration Place leadership and they are, uh, some of them are adamant that this is going to be very difficult for them to stomach this, this haircut. But in, in, in this discussion, I became aware that they have, I would say, let me choose the word significant fund balance. I don't know if that's true or not, but from all I, everything I can determine, it looks to me like it is true. But they have significant fund balance to the, to the extent that they have so much money, uh, available to them. It's unencumbered and available to them to be used. That I don't think we should be necessarily funding them this year. And I know this sounds extreme. But my intent is to move them to sales tax. And I think this, um, is an opportunity for us to say, we need to help get our property taxes under control. And I would make a motion that we eliminate funding for E P this year and that we would begin to, uh, move the Exploration Place facility over to Wichita. Um, this would eliminate the one, the, the one F T position. Again, I'm not, not saying that Adam Smith doesn't continue his position there. He would just have to become an E, an E P, uh, E P I employee. Um, and then we negotiate his salary and his benefits. Uh, I'm sure that we're very similar to what he gets today. But at the end of the day, um, uh, uh, we don't need to have an employee at E P, uh, whether we make a change in funding or in, um, ownership, that position should not, does not need to be a, a position that's funded by the government specifically. The zoo is different for a number of reasons, but I, I would tell you that I, I think that, um, there's, there's two topics here. One of those, and by the way, I've, I've done a little bit of research so far, uh, looking at the history of this. Uh, just to give you some numbers here, Exploration Place was opened in, they're opened in, uh, March seventh of two thousand. Um, the funding was, uh, the, the capital program, program, the capital campaign to raise money for that was doing a lot in nineteen ninety-six roughly, and the county committed twenty million dollars at that time. In two thousand and three, the county refinanced our, our commitment to twenty million dollars. That paid off in twenty twenty-three. As you know, we've been paying about one point, one million dollars per year. And by refinancing that debt in twenty-two thousand and three, saved over a million dollars in sale and, uh, interest. The entire project at the time was estimated to be about sixty-five, sixty-two million dollars. And, um, we signed, the county signed an agreement with Exploration Place in twenty, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-seven after the twenty million dollar commitment. And I don't know, I don't know why that timing happened. I'm still trying to find the articles to, to explain exactly what happened there. Um, but that twenty forty, so that fifty-year agreement, you know, we talked about, you can't encumber future commissions or future elected officials. That's exactly what this did. Interestingly enough, it doesn't actually talk about the dollars. It just talks about, we have ownership and reverts back to Wichita in twenty forty-seven. So to the extent that they have a significant fund balance and it's the heart of Wichita, right next to the advanced learning library, right down the street from the, the, uh, new baseball stadium, uh, right next to our convention center, right on the, right on the river. This is, and it's, and it sits on a property owned by Wichita. This really should be Wichita asset. And I don't see reason to wait till twenty forty-seven to make that, to make this change. Uh, I think it's best for them to be a, a Wichita asset. Um, so there's two parts of this. One part of this would be to reconsider how we fund them. And I think for this, this year going forward, I would rather not see us use property tax dollars for them. They should use their ending balance. There's, there's their unencumbered balances. Now, again, if I'm wrong about their balances, if someone can show me that they're incorrect, I, I don't know if this motion will ever happen. But right now, the way things look to me at the moment with their, with their fund balance, it seems to me they, they, this is a reasonable motion. When you understand their balances, they don't know that we should be giving them two million dollars when we're struggling to balance our budget. And they seem to be sitting on significant fund balance. So with that, um, yeah, my intent would be to eliminate funding this year and, uh, begin the process of transferring this to Wichita. I have the details of my motion. I'll be glad to hand you. I don't know if that's going to pass, and I understand the reasons why that won't pass, but I think the way to finesse this even further, uh, an alternate motion would be potentially to fully fund them using our ending balance. We would deficit spend a little bit. And deficit spending should be used for one-time funding, not for operations going forward. But this is a, a temporary solution. I would, I would probably move that we fully fund them from operating reserve fund. Other words, our ending balance and give them full funding that they had in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. We would do the same thing for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And in the process of doing that, we would make that transfer to Wichita before the end of twenty twenty-six. And then at that point, um, they would go to Wichita. We would have that funding go to the, to Exploration Place and they would still have their fund balance. To me, there's two ideas. They're both worthy. And again, if they can prove to me or show to me, show me that there's fund balance is not true, I might not discuss this any further. But again, based on my current data that I have right now, if that fund balance is correct, then this is a revert reasonable, uh, very reasonable motion.
Uh, a couple of questions.
Can I say one more thing? Please. I love Exploration Place. I'm, I love Adam Smith and I love what they provide for this community. This is a budget challenge. So I just want to make very clear. I'm not, I'm not anti Exploration Place at all. I love them. I think they're fantastic. But this is about what's right. Wichita needs to own the facility. And we have been, if you add up all the money we've given them for operations and, and for this twenty million dollar commitment, um, as from, from the beginning, on top of that, the interest that we've paid, the total amount of money given to Exploration Place since nineteen ninety-six, I don't even know the total, but it's, it's fairly, it's fairly high. And some buildings right now is paid off. They have significant fund balance. No one should get mad at Sedgwick County for having this discussion. This is not, this is not, don't attack the, the entity that's been gracious to this organization for all these years. Um, for twenty, twenty, twenty-eight years now, twenty-six years now. We've been very gracious and done a, we've been a great partner. But at the end of the day, things that sometimes need to change, and this one actually does make sense because they have, apparently they have the money. And it's in the heart of Wichita and they actually belong, they should belong to Wichita. Thank you.
Two questions. Um, Commissioner Howe just hit on it. Would you be able to, Lindsay, someone on your team, be able to give and just a line by line, uh, per year, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight on what we've given per year, what we've allocated to E P? So we can see the total investment dollars and taxpayer dollar investments that have gone into E P. Uh, I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
The second thing, Manager Stolt says, we're talking about Wichita, um, switch to know we're talking about Wichita? And is there a conversation that you need to have prior to this motion? So that we understand where their heads at on this?
Good, yes.
I think if we're going to entertain a motion that includes the city of Wichita, we probably better ask them what they think.
In terminal this, it doesn't affect, it doesn't impact their twenty twenty-five budget. No matter what, everything I discussed right now does not impact the twenty twenty-five budget for Wichita. This might be a future budget discussion for them, but it shouldn't impact that, the discussions they're having right now on their budget.
Other questions? Okay, next up.
We have, uh, spent since I think two, see, two thousand and nineteen, I believe, is when we started the process of D E I discussions and investments here in Sedgwick County. We have changed significantly. We've had studies, we've had, uh, programs stood up. We've had, uh, training developed by our H R. I think we're in a good place. And right now we have an un, unfilled but funded position in this budget proposal. And if you add in the salary and benefits together, it's ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars for a D E I program manager. And again, I'm not suggesting that we don't pay attention to E I. I, I just don't know this out. I'm not sure this should be a continuously funded position. I would recommend that every five years we take a look at this and make sure that we're still doing well as a county. I want to make sure that we're still doing, you know, our programming, our programs or training is still in place. Things are still uh, looking okay. So I think every five years or so, take a, uh, take a look at, uh, D E I in Sedgwick County, make sure there's no problems that have developed or are not aware of. But I don't think we need to continuously find a position and a management, a management position, again, as it's currently unfilled, yet budgeted, but this was saved nearly a hundred thousand dollars in our budget. So I would be making a motion to eliminate the one point zero F T um, program manager, because the E I program manager position from the staffing table.
Questions? Any clarity needed? On my go.
Next one? All right, this one. I have a resolution, kind of. It's, it's probably not perfect, but I have a resolution and I call this a property tax check valve. You guys know what check valves are? Means that, uh, things can flow in one direction, but can't flow the other direction. So I should say it's a sales tax check valve. Let me say that differently. Sales check, sales tax check, check valve. Sales tax could only, with the resolution, essentially what just, we'll, we'll say is that the, uh, sales tax dollars we currently, um, collect, currently collect, the fifty percent that does not go towards public work. So the other in today's dollars would be about nineteen million dollars that we have that is just going to the general fund. This check valve would allow those dollars to be spent on quality of life programming for Sedgwick County within our budget. Any surplus or unused dollars that are at sales tax dollars can flow to the general fund to offset property taxes as they do today. But what cannot happen in this check valve is property tax dollars cannot flow the other direction. Property tax dollars cannot, cannot fund quality of life programming in Sedgwick County. So let me give you an example. Let's say we have a, um, a downturn in the economy, uh, we would not be able to use property tax dollars to fund these entities. They would have to tighten their belt. They would force them to do that. If they ask for large chunks of money, you know, they want six million or ten million for this or that. unless that money sitting in the sales tax fund is available to be spent, there would not be money from property taxes to fund those expenditures. Again, this would this would require a simple majority of the of the commission can be repealed at any time. So it's not binding future commissioners, it's simply a commitment that, again, absent of state law, absent of any any outside public vote or whatever, we are simply saying within our county financing, we set up our own guardrail that says sales taxes can only be used for quality of life, excuse me, only sales tax dollars can be used for quality of life, property tax dollars cannot. And any unused sales tax dollars would be used for for property tax reductions. I'd be glad to hand this out. This one actually, I think our counselor staff did a great job getting this drafted. It may not be perfect. And I look at Justin Wagner. I know there may be some nuances of this resolution might need to be addressed by people who are very careful to make sure this is exactly what we intend. So, Justin, you want to say something?
Thank you, Commissioner How. I have copies available if you want to distribute those now. I I will, I will note that I don't know that the draft currently addresses the usage of property taxes that you've talked about. I think it is more aimed at sales taxes specifically at this point. So I think it may not have that feature right now, but I'll hand this out to all the commissioners.
Actually, I have it right here. There you go.
Thank you.
So and I agree. Again, I think maybe you need to do a little bit, just a little bit more work on this, but the intent is regardless of any future sales tax question on the ballot or any legislative action, we have sales tax dollars today that, I mean, again, when we talk to people in the communities today, and they say, well, I don't like my property taxes funding, and they they name something. Again, it might be a great organization. It might be a great purpose. But the end of the day, I believe the property taxes should fund all the core functions of government, not things that are considered discretionary quality of life issues. And there's a page two, I didn't hand out page two because it's just signatures, okay? The the meat of this is on page one. And but this this makes it very clear to our taxpayers that all of their dollars that they pay in property taxes go to things that are either required by state law or that, I think we all understand, these are core functions of government, things like tornado sirens, E M S, emergency communications, fire, well, fire department would be obvious, sheriff's department, the jail, things like that. This is not the the sales, the property tax dollars don't fund things like, for example, Lake Afton Park. Okay? So that this is a way to say that only sales tax dollars fund those things. So make any, does that make sense? Okay. Are there, I'll take any questions you have on this one.
Lindsay, for purposes for the commission, so we get some twenty twenty three data. I know sales tax dollars are they vary. So twenty twenty three, what's the sales and tax, assuming sales and use tax dollars total? Twenty twenty three, can you give us the number total and the fifty percent? And then can you also give us what quality of life community development total dollars are so we can see the comparison?
I should probably email that to you. But roughly, yes, we got about thirty nine million dollars total in retail taxes in twenty nineteen, or I'm sorry, twenty nineteen. Wow, I'm really going back. Twenty twenty three. And half of that goes to the property tax relief side of things. Depending on what you call quality of life, if you remember, we've had some of these conversations. I've actually come up with a list of like twenty two things that are considered discretionary, not necessarily quality of life. And when we total all those together, we get to about nineteen point one million. So we're a little shy. But I think we would want to have some clarity on what exactly we want to consider in this as quality of life. And then I'll confirm that with Commissioner How, what he envisions for this, and then I'll get you that list of spending versus my list of twenty two.
It may be my intent to name those things in the resolution specifically, then something that says in other other things similar to this described essentially discretionary to enhance the quality of life or provide discretionary services, charitable charitable service, you know, supports to community organizations or whatever it would be, but it's the the challenge is how to describe this in a very accurate sense. The point is, if you name those night, you name all those items in the resolution, it's clear, at least those are covered through sales tax. Thank you.
Commissioner How, do you intend for C I P dollars to also be sales tax dollars normally? I'm thinking about C I P for the zoo or is that the intent too, or?
I think we have the money in the sales tax to do that.
Commissioner Lopez.
Be talking, welcome. Okay, I remember. Would this tie the hands of future commissioners if though we've done projects for the zoo or child advocacy center where they've come and asked for large projects, this seems like that would tie the hands of future commissions, saying that we could no longer do that because it would not be in the sales tax. So how do you rectify that if the zoo or we have another child advocacy center or something along those lines that we have been historically engaged with? It's an automatic no from now on, and that can't be discretionary towards the commissioners that are on the bench at the time because we're setting it today?
So I think there's three ways to answer that question. One way, you could say there's a guardrail in place for a reason. This gives us the ability to to tell our constituents, we're not going to use property tax dollars for those types of projects. I think that's the intent of this resolution. Secondly, you can always repeal the resolution. If the commissioners would like to repeal it, they can. Thirdly, if they want to say notwithstanding the resolution, we make an exception. Commissioners are not bound by this. It's a guardrail, but I would say notwithstanding this resolution, we would make an exception. I don't know if we ought to make some type of a super majority requirement or something like that. But it seems to me that the intent of this is to stop spending property tax dollars on those types of requests.
I mean, I understand that, and I guess, you know, when we've voted on these things historically, at least recently, they've all passed unanimously, five oh votes. So it's not like this is some controversial thing that we're we're discussing. But at Exploration Place, if the if the funding agreement that has been historical there was something that you feel shouldn't have happened because now we are bound, this commission is bound, and so previous commission tied our hands and what that looks like, why is it now the opposite in this conversation? I just don't understand the the logistics of it being okay here, but it not being okay there.
Well, the twenty forty, the twenty, the fifty year agreement for Exploration Place is a fifty year agreement. It was contractual. It's it's a legal document. That's a whole nother level than a resolution that we adopt with a simple majority. It can be repealed with a simple majority. Again, I passed it. I helped I helped draft and pass a couple of resolutions back in twenty sixteen that talked about the the mill levy surplus that would be available when Exploration Place paid off, we were going to lower the mill levy by about a half a mill or so. And this commission repealed that. I voted no. We talked about there's been several things like that. So these were good ideas at the time. I think the commission felt like this was important to put these things in place, and then future commission thought it wasn't the right thing to do, so they repealed it. That's totally fine. I I think this is, again, this is not, it's not law, it's simply a commitment. This is how we're going to handle our finances. I think that the message for the community ought to be that you don't come to Sedgwick County and ask for millions of dollars for property taxes to fund things that people themselves can fund. These organizations could fundraise. They can. We can save up sales tax dollars and fund it if we wanted to do it that way. But at the end of the day, use property tax dollars for these types of requests, I think, is is problematic. It violates a principle of financial governance, in my personal opinion. I think the property taxes are for core functions of government. And if you have sales tax revenues available for that type of decision, then we can make that decision. If you if you don't agree with me, certainly vote no. But I think that we ought to have a guardrail. And I think that the people understand that property taxes are for things that they really do want, things that they value, things like public safety and human services and infrastructure. And of course, the administration of county government, we have to fund that too. But there's a lot of this stuff, these these things we're talking about right now are discretionary. There's things people could fund themselves if they they chose to want to do that. These things are run, they're more like businesses that can change their ticket prices, they can fundraise, there are all kinds of things they can do. We don't fundraise for the election office. People shouldn't have to donate money as a gift to the election office. That's a core function of government. There's a difference. At the end of the day, sales tax dollars can can and should be used for things that enhance the quality of life of our community. Property taxes are just different. Thank you.
I just want to add one last thing. I get where you're going with this. I do. I understand, like, directionally what you're saying. I guess I just my concern and my question is why, and I'm going to use Child Advocacy Center again, because that's the last one you passed, why that passed unanimously? If now it should not be anything of property tax. That's just, I'm just trying to understand the the logic.
Well, my answer is, I support the Child Advocacy Center. I'm actually on the E M C board right now. I think what they do is is critically important. I don't think that was appropriate to bring that to the commission. And again, you put that in front of me, you put me in a very awkward political position to vote against a child advocacy advocacy center. And I don't think that's a very, very appropriate thing to do, put people in a political impossible position. We have names for things like that in the legislature. Excuse me. When you put something like that, it says you can't vote against this because you'll be destroyed politically. You vote for it. And some people are very good about creating these types of these types of motions. In the legislature, they usually have ways of solving that downstream. If you have to vote yes on one of those things, sometimes they'll fix it in conference, so they'll fix it in other in other ways, line item vetoes perhaps, or whatever, but they will fix it, or on the on the other body, they'll fix it. Here, we when we vote on something, it's done. Where a single body, we vote, it's complete. So there is no, there's no downstream process that cleans this up for us. But if you ask me, do I support some of these things, you know, I can have a whole list of things that I would say, yes, I support all these things. But do I support them with property tax dollars when these organizations can fundraise? That's another question. But to vote no is politically politically destructive.
Last question, Lindsay. Some of that one time ass that we've done, would you see a case that maybe we could utilize economic development funds for some of that? When I think of what we did for Exploration Place, that was an economic development vote for me. When I think of some of these organizations that we help fund, I think of it, it's an economic development vote for me. What some of those one time things, are there restrictions in the economic development fund, which we typically always, we never utilize fully? I'm just trying to, in my mind, rationalize how we utilize that fund for maybe some of the one time ass.
So I think the commission can choose to use its budget authority in the general fund for any purpose it sees fit. Traditionally, we have looked at economic development type funding as something that's tied to an R O I. Or it's, we have other buckets of funding, community development, community programs, or culture and rec community programs, or even human services, community programs, where we typically try and put some of those things where there's not a specific R O I. And we do that based on some best practices that are put out by our our G A S B group, our Government Accounting Standards Board. But again, it's your general fund, and the commission can choose to spend its budget authority how it wants. I think the the crux of this, though, is not about where the budget authority comes from, but what level of revenue we can point to that supports those expenses. So, for example, and Tom and I, Tom Henry and I have been talking about this quite a bit. Right now, we're talking about a twenty twenty five budget. I don't know what twenty twenty four sales taxes are, so I have to rely on twenty twenty three numbers for our twenty twenty five budget. So if that's the way we're going to look at this, is that there's always a two year look back so that we know precisely how much money is coming in from retail taxes, that becomes the crux of this. It's not about where we find the budget authority from. This resolution would look at the revenues that were generated.
I see that challenge, because we don't have twenty four dollars to determine what twenty five budget would be. Would you foresee a potential contingency that we could? I'm just trying to, in my mind, put it together.
I think if you are always going to be looking to budget this through a process, and if the goal is to limit those off the cuff types of requests, then we will almost certainly be forced to look at those backwards dollars in terms of what revenue was really generated because you're not going to know until December what your real results are for a year, and we're going to be paying zoo personnel. We've got Exploration Place. We may be paying parks personnel from this. With all of those things, the numbers are going to be fluctuating constantly on both the expense and revenue side. So I, that's why Tom and I have struggled with how how to do this appropriately, recognizing all of those repercussions. Now, if you don't limit it to that, if you more look at just what's budgeted, regardless of what really happens in terms of sales tax, then yes, we can set up a contingency. So if we have an anomaly, like we did a couple of years ago, when we had a ten percent increase in sales tax, we're in a position to respond to that quickly. But again, you're not giving those folks out in the community or our parks department or anything like that time to to plan for that. At the same time, we know what's really happening. So so there are some complications to this, and I never, we never make anything easy.
Commissioner Lopez.
If it fluctuates and there's more sales tax revenue that comes in, is that dollar is now limited, that it can't go back into the general fund for other things? So it's only the one way.
Based on the way this resolution is worded, as I understand it, the cap is on how much can be spent. It can only be spent up to the amount of retail sales and use taxes. And I'm looking back at Tom Henry to confirm or deny, and he's welcome to come to a to a microphone if he'd like. But my understanding, it can flow the other direction. But I'm going to let Tom speak to the specifics.
Yeah, and and Lindsay's correct in that. So the way that it's set up in this resolution, as it currently stands, it is essentially putting a cap in place on the quality of life spending. To the extent that those dollars aren't used, that would still be available for property tax relief and is consistent with the resolution that was adopted when the sales tax was initially created back in, I think it was nineteen eighty five, right?
Sure. Interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next item. Not to the, or sorry, next item, Commissioner How.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. All right. So the next one is the auto license fund to transfer mitigation. As you know, this year, there is expected to be a shortfall at the end of the at the end of the county fiscal year, about six hundred I think it's the county fiscal year, six hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. The next year, that increases to this under a million dollars, nine hundred and fifty nine, eight forty four. So number one, I'd like to, again, this is not about a twenty twenty four discussion, it's about twenty twenty five. I would, I would move that the, we would direct staff to work with the county treasurer to reduce costs and eliminate any forecasted subsidy from the county general fund to the auto license fund for the calendar year twenty twenty five and beyond. And then along with that, I didn't, I don't have this in a motion just yet, but it would be an intent to to develop legislation. And there are three options, I think. One of them is to require the state to reimburse counties for the expenditure, should we have to do that. So the state should pay for their office. And so if if we do, if they don't have any other solution, then it would require an appropriation to reimburse the county for our costs. Number two would be to raise the fees, and we know they've not been raised in more than thirty years, if I understand correctly. And number three would be to allow the the elected official of the office to to establish appropriate fees to eliminate the shortfall. So that would be legislation options for the state to take a look at, but regardless, twenty twenty five, I have, it's my intent, we will not allow the budget to support this, this expand, expected shortfall should be eliminated from the budget.
Again, what is that expected shortfall on twenty five again?
Nine thousand, nine nine thousand, excuse me, nine hundred and fifty nine thousand, eight hundred and forty four dollars.
Could we ask the treasurer what the impact in services would be so we know exactly what we're dealing with and what her response would have to be for that? I mean, I think it's our elected treasurer, we need to hear from her of what this looks like. We we all, I think all of us agree that we've got to deal with the state on this issue, and I appreciate the legislative approach there, three options. I think they're good options that we need to discuss in the legislative platform. But I think we need to understand from Brandy Bailey what the impact would be. But I appreciate your direction. Other questions? Question, question.
Thank you. Is so the are we limited right now that we cannot raise the fees, as you stated before?
Really?
Yeah. And then, second of all, then so if, in fact, we just stopped this subsidy, that the impact to the treasury office, really, we would need to know that. And finally, then is is our lobbyist, our state lobbyist aware of this action and agrees and wants to help support us? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, did you? Okay. Next up.
This one is I prefaces by saying that I'm very proud of Sedgwick County's infrastructure. I, Lynn, you did a great job, and the predecessors have done a great job. We have excellent infrastructure in Sedgwick County. And I don't want to change that in any way. When I first became a commissioner, we we had a calendar driven we would visit all of our county roads, essentially, every five years was our was our calendar driven activity. Our bridges have an assessment, and based on the assessment, we schedule them for repairs or replacement at a time in the future based on an actual assessment. And yeah, the intent is not to close roads and not to have to reduce the weight on these bridges. And again, I think that program works pretty well. And again, I think that program works pretty well. What I, what I'm, what I'm aware of now is we moved that road program from five years to six years, I think in some cases even seven years, and correct me if I'm wrong. Some roads are old cold mixed roads that need a lot more maintenance or to be replaced at some point in the future. Some roads are like 63rd Street that were based on a federal grant that are $5 million a mile to install. And those roads have significant high level infrastructure that they don't require nearly as much. They, I think they're not prone to failure because of how they're constructed. And so to do this on a, on a calendar does not make sense to me. This motion is intending to direct staff to develop a road assessment program to evaluate the need for preventative maintenance as part of the annual capital improvement plan. And then we put that in place for future budget process. Otherwise, what I'm saying is some roads might be a five year cycle, some roads might be a 10 year cycle or even beyond. And I think it just depends. And I, I just want to tell you when a road is, when a, when a road's been fixed, it's always beautiful, it looks fantastic, but that doesn't last. And if within a few years, you're going to go out there, do some crack seal, and you got to do restriping and things like that, the roads don't look that way for very long. Derby just got done redoing Rock Road, it looks fantastic. I had a lot of people say to me, it didn't look like it needed to be redone right now. And I, again, I didn't, I didn't get out and actually walk the road and see exactly what the problems were. Maybe there were micro micro fractures in the pavement that required some type of work, I don't know. So I trust they did this at the right time for Derby. 63rd Street right now is being redone today. I mean, this, this month, it's in process of being redone right now. And as I, you know, I've not got, I've not walked the entire road, but I've gone out and looked at it. And I, I'm wondering if it really needs to be redone right now. I think we could, we could probably not do that this year. And it'd probably be good for another year or two. Yeah, I don't want to be like some municipalities and pave our streets with potholes one at a time. Okay, I want to have great roads. But I don't know that we ought to necessarily have a calendar driven activity. And that's what I see right now is we primarily do this based on calendar. It's time for us to go out there and take care of a road without any consideration for whether it really needs it right now or not. It's just time for us to go out and take care of that road. And so what this is intending to change it to be more like the bridge program. And then, and again, I think it might, we probably would like, just a thought, as we develop this, I would like to see potentially us use a third party assessor to go out and look at these roads as they hit those calendar dates and decide whether or not there's actual problems that need to be, you know, is it a small problem that can be repaired or is it a total? You know, you know, grind the road and, you know, put down an inch of asphalt, or what, what level of repairs it will need. I would like to have potentially a third party assessor help us with these assessments and help us to keep track of which roads need to be refreshed when. And I think many of these roads can go a little bit longer than what we're currently doing, and that would save sales tax dollars to be used other ways and other projects. And, and again, I think that we have more, we have more projects on our waitlist. We have sales tax revenue available. We would be able to expedite some of the, some of those other projects. So I know we can't transfer those sales tax dollars into, you know, taking care of the zoo or something like that. That's not what I'm suggesting. These are, these are dollars that earmark for public, public infrastructure. I just don't want to, I didn't want to spend the money before it's due. I want to wear things out. And I think at the end of the day, if a road can go another year or two before we take, before we actually go and fix that road, and again, doesn't do any significant damage to the road by delaying that, then we ought to do that. And I think the only way to do that is through an assessment program.
Lynn, do we use a calendar schedule or?
We have in the past, the last several years, we have officially, we call it, you know, six to seven years. However, we do evaluate the roads before we do any action on them. Typically in this area, and we have vetted this with other counties and cities in Kansas. In Kansas, you're really not going to get more than six to eight years out of a road before you need to really do something with it. I will say there are roads out there that we do something with that definitely could wait another year or two, and it's not going to fall apart in the next year or two. However, in the next year or two, we're going to have to do a more expensive repair of that road, may preventive maintenance on that road to get it going down. So we're trying to find that sweet spot where we're spending the money appropriately so that we're not getting to the point where we need to spend more money. We need to go ahead and just completely mill and, and replay, replace the surface on it. We have a system in place right now that allows us to do a windshield review of those roads. However, this year, we're playing with a system right now that allows us to do that using a camera system and AI that would help us. We're working with consultants that developed this program to actually evaluate the roads for us. And then we do a QA QC based on a windshield review. We looked into using a third party, the car, to me, honestly, with our funding availability, it's cost prohibitive. It literally for our 600 miles that we maintain, we're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars because they need to drive every road and put that time into it. We would rather do that ourselves. So by utilizing the technology which we're testing this year, so far it looks like it did well for us. We've done the second batch now and we haven't got the results back. So we are in that been moving slowly to going to more of as needed repair for our preventive maintenance. We are also working on changing our language for our goals to match that. A little harder to come up with a goal when you're just putting them down as for how many miles you're going to do when it's as needed. But again, we're just trying to hit that sweet spot so that we're not spending the extra dollars a couple of years down the road versus doing it this year or next year.
So you're kind of moving in this direction?
Yes.
Okay. Next up. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just voice, I have tremendous respect for the for the public works departments and Lynn, under your guidance and same with the city, I mean, these people are degreed in engineering and science and experience and I, I would really struggle if we wanted to have some third party, the cost of a third party and what that third party would make up. I've been to the, to the, the state engineering association meetings, a couple of them, and the level of interaction there among degreed engineers on road construction, assessment, everything is, is far above anything that any of us here at this table have. So I, I just want to put that to the record.
All right, Chairman, thank you. This next one, just, you know, and more of an observation, but we have got a lot of advisory boards and some of these boards are frustrated because they don't appear, they don't seem to have their own self assessment is they don't, they don't feel like there's value in what they do because they don't actually drive any type of decision process downstream. They are not heard by the commission. They are they're unable to, to to drive our decisions and we're not generally not hearing from, I know we're going to have a staff meeting on this at some point soon. But more of an observation is, and that one of my concerns is our impact on staff. Again, I'm not suggesting that we change everything, but I just think we got to be aware of what we're spending because there is a lot of money being spent on advisory boards. Why am I saying that? Because we have, council's office has to prepare resolutions to appoint these folks. We deal with resignations, we deal with minutes, we deal with agendas, we deal with spaces, we're paying for spaces. Staff time to attend these meetings, develop the minutes and the agendas and everything else. Sometimes communications is involved, sometimes manager's offices involved and other staff. And I don't think we actually have an awareness of what we're spending doing these advisory boards, especially. And by the way, I have, I have one motion in just a minute from, from what my advisory board who, they independently came up with an idea they wanted me to present to them, to, to the public, and I'll do that here in just a moment. But generally speaking, you know, I have, I tried to make myself available, give out my cell phone number. I'm willing to meet people at their home or at my home or any place in the community. I actually host community events where I invite people to come in informally to discuss things that they think are important. If they don't have any questions or comments, I usually give them information about what's going on in Central County, and I try to educate them to develop, if you will, some dialogue and some questions perhaps, and some some understanding exactly what we're dealing with here. So I, I do this all the time, every week. Every week I either have a cab board meeting or a community meeting that is available to people to, to meet, to meet with me. And on top of that, you know, person to person meetings, not, we meet over the phone, we can meet in person. The end of the day, I feel like I am, I am very available to the public and I encourage my colleagues to be the same. But meantime, the one thing I'm doing that is costing a lot of money is my cab board. And again, I know we all value our cab boards. Let me just throw out a couple of ideas here, but the, the animal control board, the animal care board, I know is frustrated because they've had motions they've been sitting on for years now, having been able to get those motions or those ideas to the commission for whatever reason. Agent Advisory Board, the, the steering council for the agent advisory board. They, they're on the tail, they're on the back end of the process, not the front end of the process. Their ideas are never asked for, and they're not able to input into the system to get their ideas and their opinions to drive the budget process. They are simply told what's happening and after it's all said and done. They, they don't see value in their, in their board. In fact, if it's going to continue that way, I've talked to some of those members on that board, they, they would say, you know what? Just end this thing because we, we have no value here. And if that's true, I, I hear them. If we're not going to change, let's at least understand if there's not value added to what we do, then let's consider not doing it. The, the advisory boards, again, are very interesting. The attendance is quite low. What I'm actually asking for is for us to figure out what this costs. So the motion would be that we would direct staff to assess the cost associated with commission established advisory boards, including citizen advisory boards and provide a report to commissioners by the end of 2024 with potential cost savings from standardization or elimination of such boards, again, whichever ones need to be eliminated, if there are any at all by the end 2025. So again, I'm not suggesting we do anything right now, simply just, I want to know what this costs and let's actually have a conversation at staff meeting or whatever to determine whether we are aware of these costs and the value of these boards, what they provide to the processes and policymaking that we have here as a commission.
Okay. Appreciate that. I'm just worth noting, side note, Tom and I have talked about a process to get more reviews from the advisory boards, all the advisory boards, and to set up a semi regular system. And we're working on that now. We talked about that because I've talked to some of my representatives on these boards too. So with the costing piece, I understand that's your motion. Okay. On we go. Next.
So one thing I was looking at the budget book, one thing I've noticed is the increase in epidemiology staff. I know I'm not interested in, in actually terminating a position, but I am interested in attrition. It is getting us to something that will be more appropriate for Central County. This is a motion to eliminate one FTE grade 61 epidemiologist, one from the health department staffing table. This includes a 0.65 FTE from the, of the position, the general fund to reduce the overall general fund budget by $55,844. We direct staff to prepare a report on the work performed at the epidemiology, epidemiology program by the end of 2024 for potential further reductions. And let me just say this. We have seen a huge increase in number of staff that are doing epidemiology work. Now, maybe this is all related to COVID, I don't know, but we're at the point now, we need to stabilize. I don't know, historically, we've not had these numbers in this position. So to me, this is just a haircut to a, something that's happened. We not, I think we're not aware of exactly how much this department has grown. This is a very reasonable. My personal opinion, this is a reasonable motion to get us moving in the right direction to get this to the right staffing level. Any questions?
Tim, could you get us some information on this position, just in the email?
Certainly.
Very good. Excellent.
This one has not been fully vetted yet. I'm will at least present it here. This is not I don't actually have this completely determined yet, but I, the, the idea here is, and again, I would, I would hope that our elected treasurer in our appointed, so you can be the Kansas appointed election commissioner for Central County, they will work together because they both have cyclic work. The treasurer has tax season, we, they receive a lot of payments made in, in the May and December timeframes because of, that's when those bills are due. And the office election staff have surges in, you know, leading up to the August and November elections. So the idea is that these are people are doing administrative type work. And again, it would take, it would take a, an agreement by both offices to share some staff. Just a couple of points here, the treasurer's office has 17.5 FTEs for tax. I'm not suggesting we would necessarily mess with all of those because they have work year round. But some of those folks could be used in the election office. The election office currently has 14 full time administrative staff, not, not operation staff, but 14 full time administrative staff. So again, year round, again, there's times of the year, I'm sure they're all very, very busy, but there's times of the year that maybe they're not as busy because they're not close to one of those peak moments of their cyclic work. So the idea is that we would share some staff between the treasurer's tax staff and the election commissioners administrative staff. We would be able to have some folks that know, know both jobs and could go back and forth as needed. This potentially would eliminate somewhere, I'm just going to throw out a number, half dozen or so, maybe more FTEs. And of course, the costs associated with those FTE positions would be savings to our budget.
I, I'll, you know, I'll email you some questions directly. I want to chew on this one for a bit. Any other questions?
Hey, this one comes from the advisory board. I didn't bring this up, they did. But they had a discussion about the 1.5 mils for WSU. I actually have discussed this informally, some of the meetings I've had around the county, and I've seen generally their support for what we currently do. But the cab board wanted to register their, their thoughts. They believe that this is, it's time for this to go from the county back to the city. Unfortunately, there will the reality is there's a, there's a debt service that we've committed to that requires roughly half an FTE. Do you have a handout for that?
Half a mil.
I'm sorry, half a mil, excuse me. Do you have a handout? I don't have that one printed out yet. Thank you. Let me describe this a little bit better. So what this would be, would be that we would continue to levy half of a mil to continue to support our commitment to WSU for our capital, our capital improvement commitment to WSU. But we would require Wichita to levy one mil at the city level to completely fulfill that 1.5 mil requirement according to Kansas law. So what this says is I would move that we direct staff to prepare any necessary documents and take any necessary actions to provide notice to Wichita State, I'm sorry, to the city of Wichita before May 1st, 2025. Of the county's intent to reduce the mill levy to support Wichita State University to 0.5 mils effective January 1, 2026, the proceeds of the mill levy will first be used to pay necessary debt service for John Bardo Center and University Stadium with the balance to be paid to the WSU Board of Trustees. So again, they would still get enough money to do what we've committed to from our half mil. That's about three and a half million dollars from our current budget, about three and a half million from Central County. They would get the other one mil from Wichita. So it'd be a, I'm just going to guess roughly about a $2 million roughly reduction in the overall funding. Right now, this, this year, we're getting 11.6 million. It would knock them down to about 2 million below that all overall, roughly. So again, this is from the citizens advisory board. They think that it's time for us to transition part of this back.
Okay. Questions, Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I did graduate, I did get some credits out there, but I, so I'm not speaking as alumni, but it would be a cut in the amount of money that WSU would get because the one mil is not going to get as much money out of the city of Wichita as it's going to get out of Sedgwick County. Right now, there are so many great things that are happening with WSU, with the new biomed facility, with everything going on out at NCAT. I just think that that would be a foolish move. I would not support it. So you can bring it up at the, at the time that we're going to vote on the budget, but this is one that is hard over, I would not vote for. Thank you.
Can I just add that since this is your cabs idea, maybe the cab ought to invite officials from WSU to a cab meeting and share their thoughts and, and hear the, hear from WSU leadership directly. Be my suggestion.
Justin, do we have the authority to tell Wichita that the levy is going to come from them? What, what happens here?
There, there's a couple of pieces to this, Chairman. If the will of the board would be to do what Commissioner Howell mentioned. First off, it's worth noting that this went to a vote. And as part of going to a vote to undo this would require either you could, you could undo it with four out of five commissioners deciding, well, let me back up, it went to a public vote Uh, when the city of Wichita to Cedric County in the nineteen eighties had a four fifths vote, a home rule resolution or KSA nineteen dash one seventeen. Then enacted this uh one point five mils and made it county wide. Uh, the statute allows two different mechanisms for undoing that. One is to have a four fifths vote to undo that. So. Or two thirds vote, I should say, so it'd be four out of five commissioners. The other would be to go out to a vote of the public and have them vote to um, you know. Alter uh what they did in the nineteen eighties uh or get rid of that, that particular vote, mill levy that establishes. Is in place.
So that removes that we could undo it and not have the mill levy at all. But what about assigning Wichita to?
There's a notice provision in the agreement, city of Wichita that required notice be provided by May first um. Prior to the next year. And so I think what Commissioner Howell is talking about wouldn't be able to be. Uh, you wouldn't be able to alter that until uh twenty twenty six uh is my understanding. But I believe what Commissioner Howell has in mind is. Lowering the mill levy from the one point five mils to the point five mils. There is a requirement that if you have commitments, Commissioner Howell talked about some of those commitments that exist. The county would have to continue to fund those. Uh, you can't uh stop the funding uh when there are commitments in place.
Bond.
Yep. Any other questions on that, Commissioner?
We can require Wichita to levy one point oh mils?
They went out to a vote, and so there was a vote that required that on there. And so um, I believe, I haven't looked into that fully, and I could look into it further, Chairman, but I believe that vote would still apply, and they'd have whatever options they have under state law. Uh, to to modify that if they saw fit.
Okay.
And just an observation here, you know, this would be, what this would mean is if you live in Wichita, your tax, your your overall tax bill wouldn't change. Um, you just pay your, your, the the recipient of those tax dollars would be Wichita. For the one mil versus Cedric County for that one mil. Um, so again, that for the Wichita residents, it wouldn't change their total tax bill at all. It's just simply who receives the funds. And who remits the funds to WSU. Second of all. Uh, I'm not aware of what their total budget is at WSU. I would like to know what their total budget is. I understand that they. Again, this is a uh. I'd like to have a better, maybe a fiscal note on what this would do in terms of their funding. I know it's eleven point six this today. But I'm not sure exactly what Wichita's mill levy equivalent is today, right now. Um. But I'd like to see what the fiscal note would look like, and then how would this impact? Do WSU and every, every government out there right now is tightening their belt. And again, what WSU does have. Um, the ability to recover through tuition rates and through uh. Choices and spending, how they spend their money. I don't know exactly what this funding does exactly. Some of those services they provide back to the county, like the um internships that they provide, for example. Um, or PPMC work or things like that, that might be impacted by this. So. Again, I'm not sure that we would not see some type of uh impact to. What we do here specifically, but. Um, I don't know that uh. Considering, again, I think their budgets is quite a bit larger than ours. I don't know that for sure, but I believe it's quite a bit larger than ours. So I'd just like to know, you know, from their perspective, what would this do to their? Uh, to their, yeah, they would still get the majority of this. Again, if I'm right about, they would get about. Nine and a half to ten million dollars out of the eleven point six today. It'd be a reduction, but it wouldn't be. Like there, it would not be a total. Elimination of their funding, it simply just changes. A small portion of that. So. Overall, what percentage would this be? It might be overall a ten percent cut roughly. Maybe fifteen percent cut, something like that.
And Commissioner Howell and Chairman, just to clarify, I think I was a little clunky in my response, but yes, this, the city of Wichita's uh. Vote, I believe, would still be in place on this. Um, and so if if this would carry through, it'd be a lowering to point five mil. In areas of the county that are not within the city of Wichita is how I understand it. But thank you.
Tom, Lindsay, I know that Dr. Movement, Andy Schlapp give us annual presentations of what those dollars do. Could you get an update on that? I maybe even resend what they presented to us earlier in the year. Of what the one point five mils, what they're doing with those dollars. I know they update us and.
And that's included in your recommended budget book.
Okay.
That list is.
Okay, very good. No need to ask them.
I think they have more details and what they provide to you also will get you those details, but there's a one page summary in your budget.
Thank you. Very helpful. Okay. And that's it. That's it. Okay. So we saw some robust. Options here. I think there's twelve total. What I had on my list of some potential motions that'll be coming next week. A little bit of staff work involved there is to get us some information. Hopefully. We can have that uh before we make these decisions on budget adoption day. Anything else on the budget discussion piece?
Not from staff, no.
Nothing from staff. Anything from commissioners? I know obviously tomorrow we have a BOCC meeting. There is still a line item for budget discussion. I think we could try to give a lion's share of the day for what we knew was coming. I know there's some other things will be discussed tomorrow. Um, of smaller scale, and we do have an executive session, so I'll keep us moving forward. But if there's nothing else. Um, then I will make a motion to receive and file.
Okay.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Hi.
Mr. Dennis.
Hi.
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 Hi. Next item, please. Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for thirty minutes until ten thirty eight for discussion of personnel matters and non elected personnel to discuss. And evaluate one or more candidates for a vacant staff position that reports directly to the Board. County Commissioners and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at ten thirty.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Howell.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, uh, we'll be back ten thirty eight. Uh, Tom, where where do we have a room? Okay, back over here. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are back from executive session. There was no binding action taken. Anything else need to come before the commission before we adjourn? Saying nothing, this meeting, this special meeting is officially adjourned.
Thank you everybody.